Beautiful.
Oh no, they forgot to move the camera. Sorry.
...
Let's do this. Take a moment of silence, bow our heads, take a moment of silence, put particular attention to our first responders who help us sleep better every single night. We ask if you would. Thanks, everybody. Now, for those who will and able, please stand with me or remain standing for the posting of the collar since I pledge allegiance. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, thanks, everybody. Mayor-elect John Lounds, you and your family last step forward, he shall be yours.
I state your name.
I, John Lounds.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government.
And government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of.
And of.
The State of Florida.
The State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And.
And.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
On which.
On which.
I am now.
I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Well, thank you. I'd like to say a few words before we get going, and thank you, Dale, for all your advice and support.
Plenty of advice.
Plenty of advice. I'm sure that's going to be coming through me in three minutes. I'm honored to serve as Mayland's next mayor. I'm honored to serve the City Council against all of you. This is a talented, dedicated group. I've worked with council members while in public before, and I look forward to working with Lynda Hall Harrison and Vance and Gavert. Together, I'm sure we did two great things for the city of Mayland. The key ingredient, of course, is interaction with the city's residents. We've got to hear what they want, what they need, and how they think the city should be run. This last year of COVID has taken a real toll on the personal contact, and as we come out of the pandemic, I hope the interaction between council and residents will be revitalized. I will do all I can to make sure the channels are open and that all we can do is completely transparent. I will make sure our meetings are run respectfully and efficiently, keeping the trust between people and our government transparent. I'm excited about taking on the challenges and opportunities ahead. We will continue to improve our neighborhoods and sidewalks for safety and major wastewater projects for environmental management. We'll continue to make sure our public safety departments are the best in central Florida. The accreditation and awards our police and fire department earned and regulated are truly Mayland. We'll continue to make sure that we strike a balance with development, like every city in central Florida. Mayland will experience growth. People want to be here to get a beautiful place. To make sure growth stays in scale, council is now revising the land development code and the styled back density limits. With the right balance, we are drawing top-notch restaurants and stores to our once deserted downtown. Independence Lane here, with a half dozen new restaurants just across from the Green Park, is just one success story. We'll continue to improve our neighborhood parks and the quality of our lakes and expand the connections of our sidewalks and trails. We often hear that our decisions should make our grandkids proud. One thing we established with ours previously on council is our sustainability initiative. The goal is to live within our environmental needs and move the city toward carbon neutrality. Now, the climate warms, we'll need to find ways to make the city live more for ourselves and for our grandkids. There are plenty of challenges and opportunities ahead of us. Some of them we can carefully plan for, and some of them may just arrive. I look forward to meeting these challenges with this council and with all of our residents, and I promise to do all I can to keep city government transparent and respectful. Thank you. And now, Dale, you're not done yet. We'd like to bring you back up for some special resolution you have got here. I'm not going to hold it while I read, but I would like to read it aloud. This is a resolution by the City of Mayland. Whereas, Mayor Aiden Dale McDonald has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of Mayland, Florida as mayor from April 13th, 2015 until April 12th, 2021. And whereas, Dale McDonald is being honored by the City of Mayland for his outstanding service on the board of zoning adjustments, government enforcement board, planning and zoning commission, where he was chair, South Seminole, North Orange County Wastewater Transmission Authority, Orange County Council of Mayors, Council Liaison, and Metro Plan Municipal Advisory Committee, where he was also chair, Metro Plan Orlando Board of Directors, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, Forest Development Council, Florida League of Mayors Board of Directors, Tri-County League of Cities Board of Directors. And, we've been very busy. Whereas, for his contributions to the city, Dale was named Volunteer of the Year in 2012. In 2018, NA Museum of Mayland presented him with the Jewel Andre Smith Award. The Florida League of Cities honored Dale with the 2018 Home Rule Hero Award. And whereas, Mayor Gibson McDonald has demonstrated a positive approach to achieving significant goals for our city, including the development of Mayland City Center, Mayland West, and Mayland Concourse North, the construction of festival streets, Independence Square Park, Kings Road Park, and Fennel Street Park, sidewalks in the Donneric area and the Fennel Street Trail, the adoption of 2017 CRA redevelopment plan, and the land development code. The newer pilot program, the space needs study for the Mayland Public Library, renovations of Stanford Road, designing and forming a park, naming a park at Mayland Concourse North, Lake Charity Preserve, the adoption of the bike and pedestrian master plan, and the joint resolution with the City of Wood Park and the town of Eaton Building, supporting widening of Lamore Road, U. D. St. Melon acquiring through interlocal agreements with Orange County, portions of Lake Avenue and Mayland Avenue for the city of Mayland. And whereas, Dale McDonald has effectively dedicated for Mayland's interests at the state level and has deepened relationships with the neighboring cities in the region, all to the benefit of the residents and businesses of Mayland. Now therefore, be resolved that I, John D. Lounds, and members of the City Council do hereby express sincere appreciation and gratitude to Mayor Aiden Dale McDonald for his faithful and devoted public service, and we extend our best wishes for his continued good health and prosperity, dated this 12th day of April, 2021.
Blah, 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 blah.
Yes.
Yeah. I'll say all the words you didn't say.
You're not done yet. There are more special partings yet.
All in the next 15 minutes, you two can give it up.
The tower, the award, the show, the something, keep ready. I asked her to remind you of your title.
They helped.
Want to have two words?
Yeah. Okay. John was well organized in me and actually made notes, which I don't do much of. There's a lot to say, a lot of people thank. And those of you that know me well know this has mattered to me for the last 28 years. In thinking about this, John and I combined have served the city in one form or another for 45 years? I know, I know. We started when we were 12. So, but it matters to us. And that's something that, one of the things that I've always respected so much about John is that it does matter. And I think we'll all be very pleased at how we're representing. I routinely, in the last, you know, couple of months, I've dealt with various board members of different organizations that wanted me to describe John to them. And I said, well, he's smarter, he's taller, better looking, and much, much easier to get along with. So, I think these folks, we've been very fortunate over the last six years to have established some terrific relationships at the state, at state, county level, and the interlocal level with other mayors and other municipalities. It's been terrific. It's been such a privilege for me, much as we've had with our council people. You know, these are not delicate folks. You can agree, you can disagree. The key is to get to a solution. Once you've identified a problem, let's solve the problem. And so, John is fabulously talented and is going to be able to do that. I wouldn't know where to start to thank everybody. Through that time here, we, lots change. There is more change ahead. The population of the city of Mayland is exploding. Why? It's not because of all the apartments. It's because so many people want to live here. We're a 6.49 square mile city that is at the intersection of Main and Main of North Orange, South Seminole County. There are only three ways for South Seminole, East Orange County, to get to the interstate. Either suicidal, you know, choice of 436, Calm Ranch Horatio, or Lumma Fairbanks. We're a part who understands, even though sometimes they don't quite get it. We have become drive-through cities. And it's not 19, and I see you, I see you, Andy. It's not 1955 anymore as much as we would love that. And so, we have to understand, on a 30,000 square foot, or 30,000 foot level, who we are, where we are, what we are. We have a demographic in this city to die for. Parks and lakes and schools that didn't get to be as fabulous as they are because people didn't care and work at it. And we'll have to continue to do that. We want to honor our single-family neighborhoods and nurture them as they should. And John didn't mention sustainability. Well, this is quickly inarguable that, you know, the fact that we've got 50, 60-plus-year-old sewer white lines throughout the city. No matter how technologically advanced we get, good water's got to come in and bad water's got to go out. It's not sexy, it's not glorious, but it has to be done. And I'm sure there's some future councils will take that on. But that's the legacy that we owe, you know, Christopher Wild and Leona Harrison, grandchildren behind us. These were things that were paid to us, and it's time to pay this forward, to do the right things that we actually know we have to do. Because we're worth it. You know, I'm so fortunate, or have been so very fortunate, to be a recipient of so many other elected officials in other municipalities around the state that believe we have just all going on here. We are so blessed. And the engagement of people that care, that know that there are, the servant leader roles have to be built. And it's not about being liked on Facebook all the time, is it? It's hard. Of course, that's because I can't even spell things. So, these are great things. I have great confidence in John and this council, and their wisdom and their discernment to see these things. And, you know, the city staff, Maria Sharon, you know, these are people that are invaluable and relationships that will last me a lifetime. You know, Will and Dave Manuel, these are great people. We're so fortunate. But let's not double down on being fortunate. Let's work hard to make that our grandchildren's legacy, that they get to know how that works, and that we thought of it ahead of time, even over ourselves sometimes. You know, the folks who know me know I can do this all night, but I was very glad. But so, thank you all very much. It's been a treat. It's been a privilege for me to have the opportunity to serve, and I've never wavered. I tell one story, the story never changes. And I believe that both prior councils and councils come will see that and do the same, very same things themselves. Thanks again.
Thank you, Dale. I just like this, you know, you can hear the passion of Dale's voice when he talks, and, you know, this is very, sitting near and dear to his heart. And so I know that he's going to be around, including this, like, frequently and curiously. I recall looking at before Dale was elected mayor and out of the council, and he and I talked a lot. I didn't know Dale number, but he knew mine. So, when he was, thankful when he got elected mayor, because then it couldn't call me anymore because we're on the same council. So I found an extra three hours every week a lot with my kid. But I guess that's there. I'm about to fill it up again. So, well, thank you, Dale. I really appreciate that. I wanted to also thank my family, who was now listening, left, but. And I'd like to thank all my friends and neighbors also who've come today. And I appreciate the support. But, so, anyway, that's the conclusion of my remarks. Thank you. I think we'll take a little break.
I'm trying not to get used to it.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
Yeah, Rogers, yeah.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I ducked my daughters on, and they're on the yard.
I tried to, I tried to let Johnny that day.
All right, Joe.
So, I want to be generous.
What's the real power?
Restored, restored, loved, and vice versa.
Sound like a starch in your arm?
My, my, my.
So, I want to be generous.
What's the real power?
Reestablish, reestablish love and that horizon, that advice, that's there.
Sound like a starch in your arm?
My, my, my.
I miss home.
This was nice.
We actually, my friend, with my best friend, my lovely, too, two, two, John, we're there.
Yeah, we're almost done.
You all ready to back, too?
Is that ready?
We're ready, we're ready.
I'm sorry, Michael.
I'm sorry.
All right, we head forward, and let's hold the meeting back to order. The first order of business is a proclamation regarding Water Conservation Month. Could you please come during any of the podiums? All right, I'll read out the proclamation. Okay, proclamation, whereas, water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas, clean and sustainable water resources are vital to Florida's environment, economy, and quality of life, and whereas, more than ninety percent of Florida's drinking water is supplied by underlying aquifers, and our quality of life and the economy depend on reliable, clean, and available supply of water and healthy environment. And whereas, the state of Florida, the San Antonio River Water Management District, and the city of Maitland are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation and to increase their efforts to conserve water. And whereas, all water users, including residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, institutional, hospitality, private citizens, and others can make positive contributions to reduce water use and protect Florida's water resources. And whereas, the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. Now therefore, I, John D. Lowndes, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Maitland, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month in the city of Maitland, and we call upon citizens and businesses to help protect this precious resource by practicing water-saving methods and become more aware and eat and conserve water. Do you have anything to say? Would you like to add, or?
Yeah. Oh. Well. We appreciate all of our citizens helping us meet our goals with water conservation, and we hope that they'll continue to help us meet those goals in the future, and we really appreciate that support. Thank you.
Okay, have a second proclamation regarding Arbor Day. Chris Kennedy and Kristen O'Shaughnessy are on, so make it clear. All right. Hello, welcome. All right, I'm going to read out our second proclamation. Whereas, in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside to plant a tree, and whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas, trees can lower our cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, provide health benefits, and whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and reduce stormwater impacts. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, John D. Lowndes, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Maitland, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, as Arbor Day in the city of Maitland, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by planting a tree to promote their well-being, de-wellbeing of this and future generations. Do you have any words to say about Arbor Day or your others?
Sure. So, we're very proud that the city is a tree city, USA, for over a decade now. We look forward to continuing that tradition, and we hope to see everyone join us for our tree giveaway with our new arborist that just joined our staff just recently. So, we look forward to it, and thank everyone for your support.
All right, a little more hack of business. Welcome, everyone. Let's see, the presentation, proclamation, public hearings, public hearings. City manager, do you have any little business to report?
Just to follow up on what Chris said, we're going to have the tree giveaway this Saturday. It's nine AM to eleven AM at the venue on the lake. It's a drive-through event, so you stay in your car. Maitland residents only, there are fifty free trees. There are light oats, shumardos, crepe myrtles, magnolias, and bald cypress.
Great. Everybody go plant a tree. I've planted a couple of oats in my front yard yet last year, and it's been a long, I have a story that I recently about that. Oak trees are, they provide more, just picking up our catalog of diversity than any other genus of tree in open America. So, pictures of three oak trees. All right, next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody, has anybody had a chance to read the consent agenda? Have any things removed from it? If not, motion to be open? I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Also, we skipped over, we'll move at this. We also need a prudent city council meeting, meeting minutes of March twenty-second. Anybody have a chance to read the minutes? For that part, I'm going to page you. All right. All right, does anybody have in the audience that had a comment on item number two, which is the approval of appropriation of funding for design and West Side trails? Anybody? Anybody? We'll close the public period for a little bit of work. And we've got, all right, all right, now's the time for the Maitland vote. Now, we've got to take a roll in this session.
Councilmember Jeffrey?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul Harrison? Aye. Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilde?
Aye.
Mayor Lowndes?
Aye. All right, approve the agenda. Now is the public period. Anybody have any, any, remember the public hearing thing that they'd like to address other than what is on the agenda?
Hello, I'm Stacy Larson, I'm the director of the library, and we're very excited, we're starting to see a little more programming happening. It's still not in person, but we've got some cool things going on. And this week in particular, I want to bring your attention to, this is our annual astronomy week. We often do it in February, but things are a little behind, thanks to COVID, so we're doing it this week. It is entirely online. So, today, we have a video on our Facebook page on making a sundial craft, and you can pick up the supplies at the library. Tomorrow night, we are having a Zoom chat with somebody from NASA, and they're going to talk about what it's like for you to work at NASA. We will have a virtual tour of the solar system with Seminole State colleges' Amelia Wheeler Planetarium. I believe that is on Friday night by Zoom. And we're going to have a tour of the great places in Maitland where you can do some stargazing and sky object viewing and watch the stars. And some of this is kind of cool. Like, I did not realize there is a human sundial that is in the blazing maha. I had no idea. So, this is the kind of thing that's going to come up in our video. Check out our website, maitlandpubliclibrary.org. At the bottom, there's a big section, just for astronomy, and it'll have the link for all videos, and it will also have the Zoom links for the various libraries. So, I think you will notice.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. Is there anybody else who has anything to bring out to the table? I don't see anyone, so let's close the public period. We have two decisions to make. First is the appointment of vice mayor. And I'm just going to open it up and let folks nominate or talk about their desire to serve as vice mayor, which is that typically, we've done it every year on a rotating basis, but if you get a better councilor, whatever you want to do, but.
I've got, I've got a nomination because I've always liked this guy to lead planning and zoning, and he's done a good job as the vice mayor, but I'd like to make the nomination to, um, keep Mike Wilde in position to vice mayor.
Motion? I was going to nominate Maria, I think we're.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll second. We need a, this third.
I'll third.
Okay. All right. Mike Wilde, you're vice mayor again. All right. Good, Stacy Wilde. The warm bucket of spit comes to mind. There we go. As the lead of the group, you have Vice Mayor Ali to appoint the representative of Metro Plan Atlanta Municipal Advisory Committee. And typically, for the last several mayors, the mayor has served on this committee. It's not necessary that the mayor serve on this committee, we, the mayor could serve on this committee, any member of this council could serve on this committee, if anybody has a desire to involve Metro Plan and knows anything to do about traffic. Or we could nominate senior staff or some of the staff to go and do that as well. If anybody feels strongly that there should be a elected official representing the city of Metro Plan, or does anybody feel like they want to serve on? Do you want to serve? I would serve, I don't have a burning desire to serve, I'd be happy to serve. I think there are plenty of other things I'll probably serving on as well. You know, I don't, I don't think the mayor has to serve on every committee. Given that the traffic is sort of a technical thing, and that it's a lot of dealing with, like, department heads at DOT and stuff, you know, bureaucrat on bureaucrat, it just, you know, I would think, I would appoint Sharon or her representative, and unless you have one. All right, the desire is to serve. Maybe Sharon, what, can you give us a little flavor of Metro Plan, who is there, who do you think if we're, if we're to nominate certain staff, who would be the president?
Well, I talked to Maria, I believe that has to be a member of senior staff, Maria, or is it, that's what Ben would is?
According to, according to their bylaws, it could be.